All right, I'll call it over to the Tana Mott Dessert Planning Board Meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Greetings out there in online land. So we've got Planning Board members Meredith Randolph and Dave Ashmore online, as well as our Recording Secretary Heidi Smallage. And in the C Street Meeting Room, we have myself Chair William Hanley and Tracy Loftus Keller. And is, let me just first check, is CQD the applicant or agent for the Five Spruce Lane project?
Agent is Michael.
And while Kyle's texting to the CQD person online. Heidi, what, what minutes did we have to approve again? Ah, yes, Tracy is reminding me the November ninth minutes.
That's the one.
Thanks. So got got those to approve if anybody cares to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November ninth.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
And myself, William Hanley, aye. All right. Let's first figure out if anybody is here tonight for the first item on the, well, third item on the agenda. The Five Spruce Road Northeast Harbor Project. And just as the board is aware, the fourth item on the agenda, the conditional use approval application for the community school that was taken off the agenda. So I'll just preface again, inquiry, if anybody is here for the item number three, Five Spruce Road Project, because no one was at the site visit today, either the agent or the applicant. And if no one's here for this, I think we might be having the shortest Planning Board meeting on record. Unless any Planning Board members object to that.
Should we maybe wait for?
Yeah.
Five, ten minutes or something?
Yeah, so we've got the somebody is online and they're
muted.
Yeah, and cut, someone is online, if you guys can see that, the CQD. And Kyle's trying to reach out to them through the chat, and he just made his secretary. Yeah, they're, his second attempt.
Is that Kyle sitting at the table over there?
That is Kyle.
My name is.
Hi Kyle, how are you? Doing all right.
Yeah, Gloria, I guess, is out sick. I didn't hear from Christie. But she's officially an alternate member now.
Hey, Bill, while we're here, you, you can confirm there's no other people in there, right? No one else is there?
Yeah.
In the, in the room with you?
No, I can confirm no one else is in the room with us except Kyle and Tracy.
I got them. Thank you.
Yep.
And it's slippery.
Yeah, if you guys, God, the black ice is everywhere right now. So be careful.
So nice to be able to zoom.
That's, so this is exactly why we still have this.
Case of COVID, right?
Yeah.
Being able to have virtual meetings.
Yeah, I mean.
And it's fun to see each other.
I, I can't see us ever giving up Zoom now, you know, it seems so ingrained into, into everything. I mean, I would, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I'd rather almost be on Zoom than pick up the phone and call somebody. Depending upon what the matter is, I guess.
Well, you can see the person's expression. It's so much better than just a voice.
Hmm.
It's in protocol for time limit.
Oh, what was the rule in college? You know, the professor doesn't show up in fifteen minutes, you get to leave. That's usually what I go by. I got the site visit today, no one showed up. Gave it fifteen minutes.
And it's required, baby present.
Yeah, they should absolutely be there.
I think the application tonight.
Yeah, so we have had in the past applications reviewed without applicants present at site visits, but it's very difficult. And, you know, if it is a
Is Kyle texting to the number that's at the bottom of the letter, or?
I'm not, I was just chatting on the Zoom platform.
Yeah, there's somebody online and they're not responding.
But there's, I guess I was wondering whether
Yeah, no, that's
I got hold of somebody, the Michael Leslie with the telephone number that's at the bottom of the letter.
Yeah, the nine, one, seven, six, four, eight, four, one, eight, five number.
Yep. It is very odd that we have somebody participating in the Zoom and we can't figure out who they are. It's kind of creepy. It's Big Brother.
Yeah, who is that? Do any of you want to try texting that number?
I can try calling it, or?
Yeah.
Well, I, or I can text it. I guess I would think a telephone call might be.
Maybe they might be on their phone.
I'll try calling it.
Yeah.
What is the number? It's not showing up on mine.
Well, it's on, it's on the October seventh letter.
There's a yellow.
Yeah.
No, at the top page.
From Mike, Michael Leslie, saying he's assisting C.C. Belford on the
And he's listed as the agent.
Hmm. No, there's technically no checklist on that, but the
I'm reading this. We have this provided here. Where this pretty uncomfortable.
I have Michael Les- Leslie on the telephone and he's going to try to join us by telephone.
Fantastic. Thank you, Meredith.
So he will call in in a second. He was unaware that anybody needed to attend. He understood all the things he needed to submit, but he did not realize attending the meeting. He thought we would just review it on our own.
Hmm. Thanks for coordinating that, Meredith.
Well, hopefully I give him all the numbers correctly. If it doesn't work, he's gonna have to call me back and I'll figure out what number I gave him wrong. He was going up the stairs. He was very out of breath. So hopefully he takes a minute, catches his breath or else.
Roger that. How's everybody feeling? We're, seems like half of Hancock County is out sick right now. All good in your house, Meredith?
I, I hardly ever see anybody. I can't get sick.
That's what pops.
I'm, I'm fine, but my wife's been sick for a week.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Influenza.
Hello.
Shot too.
Hello.
Is Meredith there?
I am.
Hi, my name is Michael Leslie.
Welcome aboard, Michael. This is William Hanley, Chair of the Planning Board.
Oh, nice to meet you this way.
Good to have you here.
I'm calling you from New York City. And, and I have a flip phone and I'm very, very Luddite-ish in a way. So this is a great accomplishment for me to have gotten through to you guys.
Hats off to you. Again, thanks for joining us. And if you can just bear with us as we kind of read just some protocol items on the agenda. And then we'll, we'll get into the project review.
Bill, do you want to just quickly introduce who the board is since he doesn't, he can't see what he's dealing with?
Absolutely. So, Michael, there's four of us here tonight. We had two of us in person, two of us online, and we've got, you've met Meredith Randolph already. She's online. We've got Dave Ashmore. He's also online. And then we've got Tracy Loftus Keller here in the room with me. Myself, William Hanley, Chair, and we've got Kyle here helping us out with all the all the technology.
Okay, got it. Thank you all.
Yeah, so happy to have you again. Just let me read through the agenda and why you guys are here tonight. So.
Okay.
Great. Item three on the agenda tonight, section four point three, non-conforming structures. So four point three seven, seven talks about change of use of a non-conforming structure. And what that says is that the use of a non-conforming structure may not change to another use unless the planning board, after receiving a written application, determines that the new use will have no greater adverse impact than the existing use on A, the subject or adjacent properties and resources, or B, water body, tributary, stream, or wetland. And then it goes on further to talk about that. In determining that no greater adverse impact will occur, the planning board shall require written documentation from the applicant regarding the probable effects on public health and safety, erosion and sedimentation, water quality, fish and wildlife habitat, vegetative cover, visual and actual points of public access to water, natural beauty, floodplain management, archaeological and historic resources, and commercial fishing and maritime activities and other functionally water-dependent uses. And tonight we have Cecily Belford. The agent is Michael Leslie. The location is Five Spruce Road, Northeast Harbor. It's tax map twenty-five, lot fifty-five. The zone is Village Commercial, and the purpose is to convert an existing garage into a private art studio. We had a site inspection at three o'clock. And I just have to first check if this one was advertised and a butter's notified. And according to the November twenty-fourth MDI Islander, it was. And we've got
On the list of the butters, but I don't have a date of notification.
But let's, the butters have been at least identified in the applicant's original package. So let's go through it. So first off, at the site visit, I was the only one there today. It was just a nasty rainy day. The applicant and the agent were not there. What I observed is, as was and is indicated on the submitted site plan, there's a existing residence and an existing garage. And we're talking about a change of use here. The existing garage, you know, looks like it was in the process of being reshingled, the, the walls, as it just had kind of building wrap on it, and there was no other observed anything around the garage, no footprint change or other disturbance on the property and, and it's pretty much confirmed with conformed with the site plan submitted. And with that, Michael, why don't you take it from there and just kind of outline the project for the record, please?
Sure. What this is was a, a, you know, as you pointed out, a non-compliant building. It had a couple of corners that didn't conform. And, and some rafter tails, actually, that came off toward the road that were in some violation. That was before my time, and they were trimmed off. So it was a matter of like, you know, a twelve-inch breach of some sort. So that was cut off, so that brought it into satisfactory compliance for a non-compliant building, I guess you'd say. What we're doing is basically we're just cleaning up a garage that was a little bit down on its heels. And reshing, the outside was that Elton eleven stuff that had gone bad. And we had some rotten mold on the inside, so we just went ahead and started rebuilding all that, leaving the garage, you know, possibility there pending this meeting. But we went ahead with, you know, fixing up the existing structure. There is nothing protruding beyond what you saw, what is the existing structure as it was. And the only thing we're really doing is internal and repairs to the backside of the roof. Shingles are bad. And we're also going to put in some windows high, just kind of light, letting in light. And then, you know, a new door, insulated door, insulate the walls. They were insulated, but it was all like nice, you know, funky. And that's it. There's, there's really nothing happening in the surrounding area, aside from probably installing gutters, which weren't there. But I don't even know if we'll need that, do a French drain or something. It doesn't seem to have a drainage problem. And, and that's pretty much it.
Got it. So so essentially, we're here again for the change of use and it, it seems like the, the primary non-conformity, if it was even, you could use the word primary, was again, just the pre-existing roof thieves and the back overhang, but then also you guys have a setback waiver agreement with your abbotter to the north. The Northeast Harbor Tennis Club, where they nullified the side, the side yard setbacks. So I would
Can I just ask?
That's a good I'm sorry, that, that, I, I termed it as a good thing, meaning it's okay with us, whatever that was. The tennis club.
Yeah, so it is a good thing and it's, you know, a longstanding tradition here in the town to be able to do that. Meredith, you had a question?
Well, I'm confused because the applicant isn't the property owner. There's no representation of property owner. Who, how, what's the relationships here?
Yes.
Oh, C.C. Belford is the owner of the house. And she asked me, because I am a designer and I do work up there, but also here in New York, to help her create an art studio. And my brother is a builder in southeast, southwest harbor. And so I asked him how I would go about things here. And he said to get in touch with Kim Kane, start there, you know, and say what you want to do.
I, I saw the signatures from the previous owners and I okay, it's just, there's only one spot that her name is shown.
Right. I don't know, but she's, she's a lawful owner. And, and so I did, that's obviously the first thing I did. And then I was lucky enough to get a good builder who had a job fall through. So I said, listen, I don't have, you know, any okay on this yet, so let's just keep it a garage, but let's just fix it. And so he's been doing that work, waiting for, you know, this meeting, I guess. And then if, if we, if we pass the audition, you know, he'll continue on to, you know, insulate and do all the rest of the stuff we were doing inside.
Got it. I guess I'll reach out and ask if there's any questions from the public. There's, Michael, there's no one here in the meeting room. And however, we have somebody online.
There are protesters outside with placards and stuff saying, no more art studios.
Haven't seen any pitchforks or torches yet, but
Okay, good. I believe.
Chair Handley, this is Heidi. Should we check for conflict of interest?
Thanks, Heidi. Let me, let me do that now. So let me ask if there's any conflict of interest from the board on this application. None heard. So I guess we're not hearing any inquiries from the public. We've got one person unidentified online here with us, labeled CQD. We've reached out to them. Kyle's tried to get them to respond through chat, but no feedback, so no questions, nothing being heard on this one from the public. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment then. And let's get into the review of the application. So, you know, where where this one is not a standard conditional use application, really, there's there's no standard format for this, other than just what's standing through section four, three, seven. So our review will have to be kind of cobbled together from the, the criteria of that section. And then we do have a you know, actually a the application approval sheet to sign if we get that far. So we've confirmed that this one's advertised and the butters notified. There's no conflict of interest. And I say we get right into the review of this and I'm not really sure if the typical application protocol applies, but I'll, how about we just go through the motion and say, I guess we first need a motion to approve the application. Or let's first have a motion to find that the application is complete.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to find the application complete.
I guess I'm just not sure. Don't we usually get told, like, the second thing being tributaries? Usually the application tells us which zone it's in, so that we could say we have been proven that there is not adjacent to any water bodies. I have no idea what the town puts out as what the expectation is for the application.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's discuss Let's, let's discuss the completeness of the application, so. I don't know if you guys remember the last time we had one of these that was over in Seal Harbor. And it was again, a garage conversion and it was next to a stream. It was within the stream, the stream setback. There, if you recall, and we had. A bit more information submitted with the application. That's not only the survey is very helpful, but also. Identifying any of the review criteria in the proximity of the project too. You know, going back to. Four, three, seven. You know, we talk about public safety and health. We talk about erosion and sedimentation. Water quality. Fish and wildlife habitat. Vegetative cover. Yeah, the, yeah, the archaeological and historic resources, you know, we've all seen the common submittals on that. With the. The mapping submitted. Obviously, it's the, anything relative to. Commercial fishing, maritime activities and water dependent uses as a moot point. They're in the village commercial district. But I think there's, Meredith, to your point, there are a couple items on there. We probably should have before us and. On record for the review of the project. And maybe if we could. As a board, identify for the applicant what those items should be considered in the. Submission of the application. I think that would be beneficial to the process.
It's unfortunate because a lot of it's just information. It seems to me that Kim King usually gives the applicants. And it with the application, so.
Yes, and Michael, the these, this is, a lot of this is just kind of pro forma submittals that the. The town has on record and I can say from the board's experience. For a nonconforming project like this, the more information you can, you can submit, the stronger the. You know, the board's finding will stand over time and. For instance, like Tracy was. Talking about the. Archaeological and historic resources. If you talk to the code enforcement officer, that she can point you directly to. Online database, mapping database that will. You can get a. Download of, you know, the map for the area around five spruce lane indicating any of the, either of those items.
Question there? I mean, as far as that is concerned, the the original garage is on a slab. And we're still on the slab. We haven't gone an inch. In fact, we've gone an inch shy. So. You know, I think the archaeological thing, you know, we're not digging any, anything around there, but maybe they just need that to know that.
Yeah, and and remember, it's. We're talking about a change of use here, not necessarily anything really to the structure. I mean, the. The board doesn't have any purview about your foundation type or, you know, aesthetics of the structure or anything like that, but. Just in. In past project reviews, do you need something on file? At least at the, on that map showing if there are any archaeological or historic. What's the wording? And it's, and you know, it's, it's, again, it's just a pro forma map that needs to be submitted. Things about, things like public health and safety, you know, in an email from the Public Works Department. You know, you could reach out to the head of the Public Works Department, say, hey, look, you know, can you just give me a. Email pertaining to if there's any public or health, public health and safety concerns here. With the change of use of the garage. And I know some of this sounds just. You know. A bit much. But again, welcome to our world and.
Can we approve this subject to him providing? The, that information to Kim prior to her issuing a permit?
Dave, I would, I would think in the context of this project, that's absolutely feasible, but the board would have to make that determination and. Maybe we do that right now.
I think it's a great idea. I I don't see. Wrong, but I don't see that the information for us to say, yes, we know that he's not going to damage any water and we. There are not, there's no bald eagle parked on the roof and.
Right, and I'm a little worried about the commercial fishing, however, but I think it'll be okay.
Yeah, we, we don't have any memos from the public here voicing concern about the project as we did on past. Projects. There's no one online expressing any concern, you know, the, you know, if you look at the. The site plan and the encroachment over the now nullified five yard or five foot setback on the north. North line. It's about as minimum as it gets. So I'm, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion to that effect, I think we probably should, and then we can soldier on.
So Bill, that what we, what we need is archaeological, the archaeological map, I'd say we need the. Town zone map that also shows where significant streams are. It's the only thing that I think would surprise us.
Meredith, maybe we frame the, a potential motion in the context of finding the application complete. So then we can move on with the. Review of it.
Oh, but we aren't finding the application complete. That's the problem.
That's the, that's the conundrum.
We've done that before. They approved. A project subject to them providing information. Sure how we did it, but.
I guess we say it's complete enough. I don't.
Do we say that it's? Something like it's conditionally complete upon the submittal of these items?
Yes, that sounds good.
For sure, but we've got to get past the the step of saying it's, but we found the application complete.
We could say, stated as simply as like the planning board finds the application complete pending the submittal of. This, this and this.
I make a motion to find the application complete. Upon the submission of. There's a zone map. A archaeological map. What it's an endangered species map or they're nesting bird concerns and things.
Yeah, so we, so. Yeah, fish and wild, with fish and wildlife habitat. We've got. You know, identif, just clearly identifying it's not a floodplain. I think the survey probably covers that, but a a location map might help. The archaeological and historic resources map.
It's, you know, it's not just submitting it, it's, it's submitting it, showing that this is not. In a location. Is ecological.
Right, so we, again, just running. And planning, Mr. Leslie, the planning board is a lot of repetition, so bear with us.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to put together a motion and list the maps that need to be. I think it's mostly just maps and and the, to complete the application.
Yeah, so they they need a letter from the Public Works Department. All the health and safety. They need an erosion and sedimentation control map. That's essentially, that could be something simply overlaid on the site plan, showing where their silk fence is going.
But they're not doing anything on the outside, so why would they have silk fencing? Where they're not disturbing soil.
Yeah, well, it it sounds like they're gonna be putting windows in and the door and they, they're shingling and they cut the. Eaves off the building. Something speaking to water quality. That there's no.
Wh- what agency do I ask about that?
Have you, I don't think that's necessarily an agency, but maybe. Something in writing attesting to that, you're, you're not changing any of the established. You know, water courses on the property. You're not. I know, you're, you're not. How would we?
We, we have to review that it's not impacting adjacent, the subject is adjacent, the adjacent properties or adjacent resources. So you basically just have to have a letter saying. The work to be done will not have any impact on. Surrounding resources.
Yeah.
I think that that wasn't stated in the application in my, my cover letter. That wasn't enough. Just to say that we're not doing anything outside of the walls of the existing building.
He stated that he sees no effect on public health, safety, erosion, sedimentation, water quality, fish, wildlife habitat, vegetative cover. Visual points of public access to waters, natural beauty, floodplain management, commercial fishing or any other water dependent use.
I think we just need the maps that prove that.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could just tell me which, I just where I would apply for those maps.
I would. I would contact our code enforcement officer, Kim King, and she'll. To the resources.
Okay.
And again, it's, it's a short pathway to them.
Okay, great.
But I think our motion has to clearly, we've, we've bounced around a bunch here in making this motion that it will be complete with a. The specific maps are the, a town zoning map. And I believe those show you the stream. Streams, right? So the town zoning map, a. A archaeological map. And then. Aren't there maps that show where there are. Sensitive bird?
Yeah, there, there's a wildlife habitat.
Okay, so and a wildlife habitat map. A letter from the. Town. Utility. Saying that this is having no impact. On the town utilities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Public Works.
Public Works.
What, I'm sorry, was that last thing?
It's, it's the Public Works Department that you're looking for.
Okay. Okay.
Heidi, have we come up with a motion?
Well. What we have, let me just go back. Where the heck is it? Oh, there it is. Ms. Randolph moved to find the application complete pending submission. Of, and then we jump forward as zoning map, archaeological map, wildlife habitat map. And a letter from the Department of Public Works regarding impact on town resources. That sound like something you want to use?
Yes.
And we need a second.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Meredith?
I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
And myself, William Manley. Just before I lose the thought, should we? Should then we make a motion about the. The review criteria of section four, three, seven that we don't find applicable? Given the. The address of the property and the zone it's in, such as the. The water dependent uses.
Saying a criteria that if, if there should be any issue on any of those maps. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, they're, they're obviously not in the. Commercial fishing and maritime activity.
Right.
Zones, you know, they. Really should not be having to submit anything on that. And the town zoning map will show that. And and other functionally water dependent uses. And they don't have any concerns about visual and actual points of public access to water. Again, they're based upon the location of the property. The same thing, you know, when you think about the floodplain management too. You know, the, the, you know, the projects up in. Sylvan City. And. You know, with the submitting of the tax map too, we're gonna see what the adjacent properties and the surrounding resources are, but. You know, I'd like to think we all know, given the location of this, that additional information, testimony. Testifying. You know, water dependent impact probably is a moot point in this case.
I think we're just, we're, we need the proof to say this is not having any impact because. It's not in the zone of a body of water, tributary stream or wetlands.
So.
I mean, the two criteria is if we didn't have this awkwardness. We'd say we are not finding that the change of the use of the structure has any impact on the adjacent properties or resources. Because there's nobody here objecting and we have a letter from the tennis club. And then. And then we just need the. Maps, the, then complete, the relevant maps that we've asked for to confirm that there's no impact on. Water bodies or any adjacent resources.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, again, i- if, you know, the, the structure was there. And it got approved in its, in its slight, you know, not quite right location. And then we, you know, did this work on it, so it's still there. It's just nicer, you know, it's just. Clean and new shingles and stuff like that. So the, you know, the water and the archaeological and all those things. Nothing has changed from the original waiver that may, maybe they submitted all those same documents. I don't know. I'm just curious as to how, if it's just a matter of protocol that we go through all that. The maps.
It really is because if those were submitted relative to the garage use, you know, that's again, that we're talking about use and. That was a different use. again, that we're talking about use and that was a, a different use relative to what you're proposing now. And again, it's just a matter of protocol, getting these items. Getting these.
It's giving the opportunity really to neighbors to object that it's a non-conforming. So I, I also designed houses and I submitted a project and thought it was the exact same thing and yet the neighbors got all pissed off and threw fit and God knows why. There was, it was no change the outside, they were just mad and, and they stopped the project, um.
Aye.
But it was the same, but they were given that opportunity and it wasn't, the building wasn't conforming, so they had the right to have anything being done to it.
I see. So it's just really, it's just like belt and suspenders kind of thing.
We, we just need paperwork to show that.
Right.
You've, it's just, it's just the, the criteria behind it to show that the application's complete, we've done our job, we reviewed it.
Right. Gotcha, okay.
You know.
I will, um, I will do my part.
So I guess there's two paths to follow here, either we can, um, you know, we can move on with the review of the application and, um, you know, potentially have a, a motion for approval pending that's the middle of the necessary items or we just, um, continue this one to the next hearing and they submit it all then and it's pretty.
I feel, I'm, I'm sorry to say, I feel like if that's a little more responsible, I think if Kim Keen were here, she would be objecting to us um, reviewing and incomplete.
I, I'm.
She's the one that told me how to do it.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. She keeps us all on track and, you know.
I think, yeah, I can hear her voice in the background right now, um. With, so we, the planning board meets the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, uh. Yeah, the next hearing is on the eleventh of January, there's only one, one hearing in November and December typically because of the holidays.
Um, right.
Would you be able to sleep at night if we continued the review of the application to the eleventh and that, and in between now and then you submit those items to Kim Keen?
Yes, I will, I will do that, I will start this process tomorrow, uh, with her and then, you know, try and get those, those emails or whatever is required to you or to her as soon as possible. Um, uh, and, um, you know, well, I'll just do what needs to be done. Um, I, it's funny because she's the one that told me, no, this is, you know, this is not going to be a problem and you know, here's how you do the application, these are the things you require and it should be, you know, smooth sailing. So, um, and it's fine, I mean, I, I understand.
Yeah, and it's, it's, again, it's really straightforward and it's just, again, you know, the decision stands in perpetuity with the, with the property. So the, you know, the stronger, you know, stronger legs we can stand on, the better and the more information, the better.
Um, right.
And it's, you know, it's, it's definitely valued to your, your client to do so, so I, I would cast a vote for someone making a motion to continue this one until January eleventh.
Yeah. Uh, Tracy Keller, I make a motion to continue this to the date certain of January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Meredith Randolph, I'll second that.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Um, I'm not going to be here the eleventh, most likely. I'm, I may be on Zoom, but I may be traveling too.
Okay.
But, um, I, I agree.
And, uh, myself. Myself, William Manley, I agree too and, um, so we've got, and Michael, just to also paint the picture, you know, we've got Gloria on the board, she's out tonight. Kim was out sick tonight and if we need another alternate member, we still have Christie, we can pull in too, so finding a quorum unless, you know, you know, three of us can't be, I don't think is any issue.
All right.
Well, welcome to the planning board process.
Thank you.
Thank you all for inviting me, this has been great. No, really, I do appreciate you taking the time and, uh, giving me the guidance that I need to, to get this through. And, um, and, uh, it sounds like it's, it's gonna happen, I just had, gotta fill in a couple of blanks.
I think Kim must have seen it as so simple that she kind of over, she didn't give you enough directions because she just saw it as so simple, she probably just brushed it off a little too easily.
It, it. Right. But I, but I know she's pretty, kind of a stickler, um, reputation is that she's, you know, pretty, uh, uh, I was afraid of her, to tell you the truth, but she was great.
That's good, say that way.
Yeah. Anyhow, okay, so I don't want to take anymore of your time, if I, if I'm all set, I'll just get on those things and, and we'll, uh, here on the eleventh.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks again, folks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, those, those are always tough ones, I mean, because we don't have like a clear checklist to march through and you know, the non-conforming projects, we absolutely need to have the information submitted, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
We try, we clearly tried to push it through forum, but it just wasn't working.
Yeah, I think it would just would have been a little, the, then, you know, to make a decision.
CQD is keeping an eye on us, so that's what's.
We're, we're being watched. But, uh, so you guys heard that the community school withdrew their, well, they're, they were next on the agenda tonight, that didn't play out because they were not ready, I guess, so they're going on the January eleventh, um, agenda too. And, uh, looking at the agenda, next is other, do we have any other to discuss? None heard, I would encourage anybody with any potential leads of, um, potential candidates for the planning board to always, you know, work those angles if you got them. I've been, uh, mentioning it to just about everybody I've run into. And, uh, other than that other, next item on the agenda is adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
David Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
David Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Manley, aye. Drive safe home tonight, I mean, the roads were glazed, so. All right, thank you.
Drive careful, you guys, goodnight.
Thanks, Heidi.